All it takes is one thing. If we have a couple of teachers resign. That is a huge issue. We're 29 teachers down. And like I said, I know a teacher right now, one of the most popular teachers in school and she's leaving for Pennsylvania. So we're already bleeding and it's only going to get worse. And like I said in my other comments, we're not at that point where we're able to say, okay, we have enough money. We're able to give them enough salary. We're not there. We're not there with our healthcare. That's something I hear from teachers all the time is we're not even competitive with healthcare. So what's driving the King George? I think that's a question that needs to be answered in the budget alongside other little projects that I think are really good for the students and teachers in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go on to why we're here in this meeting and that is to have a work session about the 2023-2024 budget. Dr. Boyd?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So I am growing to appreciate very quickly that this process is very, very fluid. So a lot has happened since we last were together. We presented initially the budget to the school board on February 6th. And since then, let's see, the General Assembly has completed their legislative session. They've gone through crossover. They have shared bills, vetoed bills. Haven't decided on a budget yet, but nonetheless, at this point, we do have two additional budgets that are draft budgets that we're taking a look at right now. And I've shared that with the updated presentation that I provided you guys in the handout. That's the stapled presentation. So the updated budgets are the House of Delegates has their version of the budget and in this has their version of the budget. To go along with what we were working off previously was the governor's proposed budget. So again, all very fluid, ever-changing numbers right now, but they do give us a nice ballpark figure as to, you know, where we stand as far as revenues are concerned. Since we last spoke, I think you guys know I've conducted with Mrs. Higgins, a number of community forums. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback from the community and the different magisterial districts. So those have been very successful. We hope to continue those in the future. The Budget Advisory Committee, we have constructed, we've met two times and we're hoping to meet an additional time at least before I present to the Board of Supervisors, which I just found out this afternoon that that looks like it's going to be on March 9th. So my presentation to the Board of Supervisors, they'd like the School Division to be first. And yes.
They know that's Steam Night?
You know, it's also, I'll reserve my.
Also tonight, I'm going to be in Haiti too.
Okay.
Not great.
So they're rolling and of course they want the School Division and the Sheriff's Department and Public Safety to be at the very front of their work sessions and there's.
Are they starting like four or five?
I believe it's at six, but I mean, as far as the series of work sessions that they're going to have, they're going to begin those on March 9th. And, and they will continue for, I don't know the number of them, but I had the impression they were five or six different.
Okay, so that's just the first one.
That's just the first one.
I was afraid.
Is he not starting earlier in the day?
No, ma'am. No, it's, it's different evenings is the way I took that.
Do you know how long these work? I mean, will it be over two weeks or a month? Or do you have any idea?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
Oh yeah. So again, Budget Advisory Committee will likely meet an additional time. We've, we've gotten some good information and good feedback from, from that committee. Certainly drilled down to certain areas of the budget that do need some level of reflection that we've been able to give to those areas of the budget. I've met a number of times with principals and supervisors to talk about taking a look at budget objectives and priorities. And again, right now on the books, I've got individual meetings with supervisors and principals in the next week and a half to come back to the table individually with me to take a look at their, but their specific budget requests. So again, we can, we can prioritize things and make sure that we move forward with our priorities in the right place. I know you guys, well, before I mention that, I've also had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to meet with Board of Supervisors members individually, many of them with the county administrator individually to, to number one, forge that relationship and make sure the relationship between School Division and the county is very strong, but also to just begin having informal conversations about the budget, the budget process. As I'm new and many of us are new as well. So just taking an appreciation for all of that and having a lot of those conversations prior to the presentation. The last thing I was going to say that is really impactful and probably something that we do need to spend some time on this evening is just yesterday, I believe it was, is we received our renewal rate from Anthem Healthcare. So that, that's more than we expected. We were estimating a 3% increase because in the four years that we've used Anthem, 3% was, would actually be a high estimate. We've gone 1%, 2% in the past, and in fact, even years we've, we've lowered. So it was a bit of a surprise to us to receive a renewal rate of 9.9% this year. But in speaking with other superintendents in the county here in King George as well, we seem to be in the, that seems to be the going rate for a number of reasons. So what you have, one of the things that you have before you is the local choice rates and the different options that we may consider. These aren't options that we, we have to consider. But we did want to provide something to you this evening that would kind of shape this conversation because we do in essence need, need some feedback from the board about what we should consider as far as the way we structure healthcare or structure our rates moving forward. And what I mean by that is what you're, what you're looking at is on the left-hand side, you'll see our 2022-2023 monthly rates. That's what we pay now. What you'll see in that green column is the increase in, in all of those healthcare plans. So what you'll see is our different healthcare plans. Key Advantage 250 is one of our plans. Key Advantage 500 is the other plan. The top section includes, includes comprehensive dental. The next section down includes preventive dental. So those are our current healthcare plans. And as you work your way from the left of the table to the right of the table, you will see in the green section, the overall increase based on the 9.9% average increase. And then you get into the options. The next option is if we as a board discuss absorbing the 9.9% increase and the employee not absorbing any of the increase, the, the cost to the school board for each of those plans is in red. It's important to note, and if you have a pen, you can jot it down, what that would mean in an overall cost would be an additional $449,000. Again, this is a very fluid number because it's based on, again, the number of employees we have next year, the number of employees that choose healthcare, the plan that they choose, but an estimate based on our current healthcare usage is that that option would cost the board $449,000. The next option is the board picking up 6.9% of that increase and then sharing 3% of that increase with the employee. That would be an estimated cost of $334,000 for the school board. And you can see the individual cost increases for the particular plan. So if you, if you wanted to know what it would cost an employee additionally, you would take a look at that column that is, that says employee increase. So for the top plan there, employee only, it would cost the employee $20.56 extra a month for that plan.
Can you say again what the total additional cost for the school board was for that?
Yes, for the, for the purple column, the additional cost to the school board would be an estimated $334,000.
Wait, but the previous one, you said 49,000, didn't you?
449.
400.
Yeah, 449.
Wow.
Yeah. 449,000 for the first one. The second one is 334,000. The third option is the board picking up 5% and the employee picking up 4.9%. Again, you can see the cost increase for the employee. The overall cost increase for the school board would be an estimated $225,000. And then the final option is the board picking up the 3%, employee picking up 6.9% of the increase. And that would be an additional $114,000 to the school board. And again, that, that right now is, prior to knowing the rate increase was the amount that we estimated in the budget. So we would not be starting from zero for any difference. We would be starting at that 114 and, and moving up or down or whatever the pleasure of the board is. So I can stop there. That's a lot of information to kind of process and certainly, certainly take any questions from the board members. The other thing I do want to say before I hand it over to you, Mr. Chair, is on the left-hand side towards the bottom, we've had a number of conversations this year about different healthcare options. And one of the things that we took from many of those conversations and suggestions is providing an additional healthcare option of a high deductible plan. We're hearing from many vendors and really many, many younger employees that that is a very favorable healthcare plan to them. So that is an option down there on the left-hand side that we would like to offer. Doesn't change any of our other, other plans. Our other plans remain the same for the employees that currently use those, but this would be an addition.
All right, questions about this? I have several, but let's hear from the other board members first.
I don't have any at this time.
Ms. Hawke, anything?
No.
Ms. Hoover? Rolls?
I have comments when it's time for that.
I'll go ahead and ask a couple of things. I mean, obviously, when I look at this, you know, the one on the far right would be nice because that's almost what we planned, 114,000 as compared to, wow, 449,000. But then again, we're going to be looking at giving the teachers a raise and then we're going to take money away from them by having them having to pay more for insurance. I mean, it's.
If I could speak to that quickly too, I crunched some numbers while we were up here. If, if our starting teacher's salary is about just below $50,000 and, and we're suggesting a 7% increase, then that's about a $3,500 increase for that teacher. 35, $3,500 increase over a 12-month period for that teacher. If you divide that by 12, it's about, I think it's $270-ish dollars per month without taxes being taken out. So you're probably looking at a new teacher with a 7% pay increase. And again, this is a rough estimate, but it's probably, they're probably going to take home maybe about $200 a month difference.
After they pay for the insurance?
No, prior to paying for the insurance. Yeah. So I just use that as a reference because they're going to take home $200 and then whatever we decide on as far as healthcare is concerned, that would be subtracted from that raise.
So these last two, they would lose a fourth of that approximately by paying more for their insurance.
And again, you know, it depends on if they're a single or if they're a family.
Of course, there's so many variables. Yeah, I'm curious. I wish we had more teachers here to ask questions about what they think about some of this, you know, looking at, obviously, they would like us to absorb that. That's obvious, I think. But the thing is, is to ask that much more to the Board of Supervisors, we're already pushing the limit as I'm listening to the Board of Supervisors. And now we're going to say we need another third of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Because basically we planned on 114,000, but now this increase is 449, so that's $335,000 difference. That's if we were to pay everything. That's huge.
Now again, you know, a lot of the process we're in right now is, is looking internally too. So, you know, we wouldn't have to necessarily shoulder this entirely on the back of an additional request to the Board of Supervisors. Potentially, we could look within to see if we could make any adjustments to our budget as well to address.
I understand.
Healthcare.
But it's obviously, it communicates better to make adjustments for their teachers to get their raises rather than simply making adjustments to help them deal with insurance. Yet both are equal in some ways. But obviously, we have more favorability by the teachers that were working hard to make those adjustments for their getting a raise and not for them paying for simply healthcare unless for their insurance.
Like I said, you have a question. Going back to the far left side there, when we have the different plans, employee only, employee plus one. Just the right of that, the column has percentages, versus 85%, then 70% and 67%. What are those percentages?
So the overall increase from Anthem, the average increase, I should say, was 9.9%, I think is what it was. When they sat down and started crunching the numbers between those different options, they found that there was slight variation, very slight variation. You can see it's like a hundredth of a percentage point with many of them. So basically in those particular areas, there's just a slight variation in the percentage change. Does that, does that make sense?
When it says employee only 85%, what does 85% mean?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the percentage on the right-hand side, the 9.83, the 9.87.
Yeah, I understand those.
Okay. Uh.
I think.
Yes. Yep.
Looks like the percentage of the board is.
That the board's covering, yeah.
Yes, that is the percentage that the board covers now for that particular plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a reason why it varies so much from plan to plan?
I, I think when we spoke this morning, it was about, you know, a philosophy of covering the employee first. So is that a correct assumption? Okay, so making sure that with the employee only plans, we're covering mostly the employee. But when, when it goes beyond the employee plus one or employee plus family, that percentage drops because of the additional members of the family that it would have to cover. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Looking at the philosophy of this and looking at the percentages that we're just referring to, it looks to me like obviously we're, I know it costs more money, but we're, we're really focusing on that new teacher coming, possibly not married yet, helping them in those first few years before they get married or whatever and paying, you know, 85%, 93%, so on, from 85 to 96%, looking at the different plans. The focus is, which is interesting because Ms. Hoover and I, when we were at the high school, we heard from several teachers that it's pretty clear to them, which they understand, which we are focusing on getting a lot of the new teachers and we're focusing on their salaries being up where they should be rather than necessarily focusing on the teachers we have. I just philosophically understand that because we do need to get those teachers coming into the division in the first place and I understand that. But that was a concern that we heard quite a few times is our focus and philosophy seems to be on getting those new teachers rather than keeping the one. It's not that we're not focusing on keeping them, but that's a little less focused than getting the salaries of the first few years of their teaching. Well, go ahead.
Yeah, so philosophically, the way I look to approach it is, I mean, costs go up, they go up for everybody and we do the cost of living adjustment to adjust for that and healthcare is one of those things. So, you know, right now we have a cost or share of all these plans, what percentage we play, pay versus the employees. I like to keep that fixed. If we pay 5%, we pay 5%. And to do that, it would mean if there's a 9.9% increase in the premiums, it's just our dollar amount for a given plan, say that first one, employee only 5%, would go up 9.9% and then the employees share, would also go up 9.9%. And so that would mean if you look at the first case where the board pays all of it, that's a total cost, additional cost for us of 449,000. But if, yes, it's a little confusing the way it's written on the top because you're doing percentages as a percent of the total dollar amount increase. Whereas I'm talking about the percentage of what you're already paying each individually. Am I making sense?
So you're talking about right here, it says 80, employee only to the far left is 85%. And if we kept that, even with a 9.9, what would that be? Is that what you?
Yeah, in order to keep that, we'd often be like, our share goes up the same percentage as the employees' share. So just make easy math. Let's say it's a $100 total payment. So for that, if it was an 80% cost share, then the board would be paying $80 a month and the employee would be paying $20 a month. And so to round the 9.9%, it just caught 10%. So if it goes up 10%, then the board would pay $88, you know, per month. And then the employee would pay $22. So you only $2 increase for them, but $8 increase for us. But so you, so big picture then, if the first column or the board takes all of it, it'd be an additional 449,000 for us. If we're splitting it, then now we'd only pay half of that. So then it'd be 225K for us extra, which is still more than we originally thought, but you know, not doing all of it. So which total is different, the same as looking at that orange column where we're saying the board takes 5% of the total dollar increase and employees take 4.9% of the total dollar increase. But I'm not quite figuring out how the math you did here because when I look at that for the employee, for instance, the first line, we're saying it's a 33 point, I'm sorry, $33.90 increase, when it was about $100 before, a few all the way back to the left for the employee. So that's like a 32, 33% increase where.
For the employee.
Yeah, so I'm not sure how we're getting there because what I would suggest for that in my example is that we all have a 10% increase for what we're, the part that we're paying. So for that example, the first line, for that $100, instead of going up to $137.99, it'd go up to about $110. It'd only be like, you know, $10 increase because 10%.
So I want to make sure I follow you correctly. So currently on the left, on the, let's just use the key care, key advantage, the same example you're using.
Right.
And the employee only, currently the cost of that plan in total is $702.
Right.
The new cost of the plan with the increase will be $771.
Right.
So what you're saying is that the difference there is $69, which we see in the next column. And the, the employee would pick up, how much of that?
It would. Sorry, can I, so I think, so doing the math, it would basically, I think, make, if you adhered to Mr. Rolls's philosophy, it would, it would put us pretty much in the yellow column, I think. So if you take like the, an employee pays 15% of the total, the new total cost of $771, the employee would now pay $115. So it's actually higher than the, it's between the yellow and the purple column. So they, that would be like the employee one and then say a family one would be 67, 33%. A family would go up to $687. So it would basically be in the, the same as the board paying.
So it's going to, it's going to vary, right, by, by the percentage that the board currently covers in that particular plan. I follow your logic, I think. So.
I'm not sure. I guess the thing that's really confusing to me here is like, like your orange column, it says employee 4.9%. But if you look at that, the starting cost for the employee, right, is $104.09?
Yeah, I follow you. It's much more.
And then the employee cost at the end is $137.99. That's not a 5% increase. I mean, that's.
So I have a question. Maybe all these across the board are what 85% is. And then there, we're increasing it by 9.9%. Like maybe this line here, the employee paying 85%. I think each one of these is with the employee paying, I mean, the board covering 85%.
Across, from left to right?
Yeah.
I don't think, oh, um, but then that would have your.
I was making that.
I don't know that that is.
The percentage that the board covers is that across the board?
I don't know. But I, I think you're, to your logic, what you're asking us to do is take the new rates, which is the first column in the green section, take the percentage that the school board covers, right, that, that column, that 85%, 70%, 67% and give 85% of the increase to the school board and 15% of the increase to the employee in that first.
In that case, that would be the, right.
Yeah, in that example.
If you take the school board costs and you multiply it, you add 9.9% to it, you take the school employee costs and you add 9.9% to it. So each for the same.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I don't understand though, is with this orange column, how we said, well, I guess basically, I don't know how you calculated those numbers. Because like we're, you're saying like that, but we have the same increase-ish for a school board and employees in dollar amount, regardless of the fact that we're already paying a much higher percentage.
Yeah, now that you meant, now that you bring that to my attention, I, I think you're right. Yeah. We can certainly crunch those numbers and, and bring them back. Yeah. So we, you, we follow the logic. Yeah. So basically, we take the new rates, we take the amount that the school board traditionally paid for the, for, in that particular plan, 85%, 70%, 67% and, and adjust the increase according to those percentages and those particular plans. I follow you.
We'd be doing exactly the same thing we've been doing as far as how much we pay. And now they would have to kick in something, but still we'd be paying 85% of the majority of it.
Sounds good.
I think that might be a little more.
And, and I'll, we'll crunch those numbers tomorrow and I can certainly share those with you guys in an email.
That's a very good point, Mr. Rolls. Thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, excellent.
So then just big picture, that would work out to us increasing our budget by 225,000 roughly and it's half the total change.
So it would save 200-some thousand.
Yeah, so it's still more than what we were planning on, but not the whole amount.
But again, I think it's fair to the, I mean, I don't want to speak out of line, but you know, the school board would still be covering a substantial portion of the increase. And the employee would be covering.
Because if we didn't do that, then yeah, we'd just be increasing our cost share even more. And I think probably with cost shares, there probably is just a good spot to stay at.
Sounds good. Gonzalez?
So if I were to offer a counterpoint, I, in general, in principle, agree with that philosophy. But I think considering what we're trying to do anyway, raise salaries show that we're investing in our teachers, all these sorts of things, right? I, in this case, considering the size of this increase anyway, I mean, I would be in favor of the board paying that increase and assuming a more stable, you know, fiscal environment in the future, which not that we can count on such things. Anyway, I think that, that this conversation of applying, applying the percentages would make sense. But I think to continue trying to make the statement that we're making, that we recognize we need to get ahead of the curve with our compensation, I think it would, it would, it would be a good gesture, a gesture in good faith that we are doing everything we can. And we, again, if history is any indicator, it's highly likely that our total delta is likely to be cut by the Board of Supervisors. In an ideal world, right, I hope that's not the case. But you know, I, I'm never comfortable, I'm never comfortable with us reducing our own budget before we even get to them, right? We're going to have to, probably have to make cuts and have decisions after that point in time.
What you're saying.
I'm in favor of going in high is my, my point.
Maybe agreeing with Mr. Roll's idea after we hear from the Board of Supervisors.
In a more, like, you know, if we weren't in the situation that we're in where we have such high teacher shortages and we're, you know, in many measures behind the curve, right? I just, you know, the numbers, numbers don't lie, right? So we're at near the bottom of the bucket in our teacher shortages across the Commonwealth. Our per pupil expenditures are some of the lowest in the state. We need to get ahead of that. And, you know, if we weren't in that position, if we were, you know, higher up in those, higher up in that, in that, in those ratings, I, I think that would make sense. That's like a standard bit practice, right? Insurance rate goes up and everyone pays more, right? We all probably do that in our own lives. But I think in good faith.
Let's not start cutting.
I wouldn't start there.
That's a good point.
I do agree with that. We also, I'm all, sorry, it was on. I certainly don't want to cut, especially in this area. I mean, if, if we have to cut, we can, we'll find other places to cut. But we don't have any input at this point as to what the county is going to do about their own insurance. Is that correct?
Correct. We, we know at this point that they're, they're expecting about a 9% increase, but also this year are planning on proposing, including their retirees on their healthcare plan. So I think it's, it's believed that theirs is even going to increase more than the 9.9%.
Okay. Well, then that gives us perhaps a setting to at least, as Mr. Bush was saying, ask for that amount. Certainly go, go for what we need to go for and then if we have to make cuts, we'll do so.
I think that's a good point, especially if we're, if we're aware that the Board of Supervisors also going to have to deal with this increase in insurance. We're saying, well, we're no different than you. We have got to deal with the same things. I'm, anyway. We're saying, well, we're no different than you. We have got to deal with the same things. Um, anyway, that's, yeah. I, I like what you said. However, I do think we should look at what Mr. Rolls was saying and still have that here. So that becomes part of the overall picture when we're dealing with, um, it's sad to say we have to negotiate some of these things, but of course we do.
And, and certainly that can be the rationale at that point when we come back and, and manage it.
Yeah.
Good, Mr. Viewers, anything? No. Uh, a couple of points on that. I mean, speaking of negotiating good faith, I mean, saying we're going to go high is the first negotiating thing. We do realize we're watching this meeting, right? So I mean,
I mean, I, I doubt my sentiment surprises any of them at this point, so.
And the second point is like by totally funding it ourselves, then just, no matter what happens with the Board of Supervisors, they're only going to give us so much money, and then we're going to have to distribute the best we can. And so by subsidizing the, um, increase totally, and that kind of goes to the whole presentation I made on the economics and other people's money, then, then because all people's money, and we're not going to really spend it as well with the employees using that. And we're also then, um, discriminating against, it's maybe something I didn't realize, last year we had the exact same discussion, but about half of the staff don't use our insurance. So then by subsidizing it, we're discriminating against the half of the employees that do not use the insurance. And it's money that, that we can't give to all of them. So I prefer to just make it even across the board and, and then any extra money that saves us. And that's that much more we can give as a cola to everybody versus favoring just the half that use our insurance versus the other half that don't.
Or if I could offer a counter to that, you could use the coverage as incentive for recruiting new employees that we offer. Right? That we provide good, good insure, like good coverage.
Right. You understand my point that it's a, it's going to be a set amount of money no matter what. And so if we don't spend the money on just helping just one half of the employees, we could use the same money to help, just give a little bit more money to everybody. That cola, so it's across the board then. This is kind of my thing.
I do think also with this is that, um, we'd already talked several times in board meetings about looking at new insurance after this budget season's over. I think this even, um, makes the point even clearer that maybe this coming year, we need to go ahead and do that. Obviously, that's not now. After this budget, that we will go ahead with what you had been suggesting about looking at the possibility of making a change with our insurance for this coming year, starting in maybe April, as you suggested, this, um, anyway. But that's not now.
Right.
But I do think that this does show us that we need to be looking at other options for next year. But we don't need to go to that anymore. Let's talk about this.
All right. So not to belabor the points, at this point, uh, the will of the board right now is to, uh, uh, accept the nine point nine percent increase on the front end, uh, in the budget presentation. Uh, but be prepared with the option that was described.
Yes.
Okay.
The numbers.
Yeah, I like that. Okay. Anybody, anybody else? Ms. Hawk? Ms. Hoover, what are you thinking? Nothing. Okay. It's difficult no matter what we do. All right, let's go to some other pieces of the budget, if you don't mind, Mr. Dr. Boyd.
Uh, no, not at all. Um, is there anything in particular? I don't want to, anything that, yes, I see.
So I have one request after the Budget Committee, I think it was the Budget Committee meeting. Um, I, I know this is, you know, all it does is, I guess, one, aiming high, which I wanted to comment, our, our high is still pretty
Low.
Low. So let's keep that in mind. Um, I think it was Ms. Yuzerski who made a comment at one of our previous meetings about just the philosophical difference between offering a starting salary below fifty thousand dollars. Um, I would like to see our starting salary be like fifty thousand and one dollars or something. Um, I just, it sounded like that's a, you know, that's a point. Um, it sends a message, even if it's only a matter of dollars.
What it, can I stop there for a minute? What is it exactly right now? Our starting salary forty nine?
Forty nine? With, with this, with the increase.
Forty nine, seven fifty.
Forty nine, seven fifty.
So how much would, well, we don't know exactly, obviously. How much would that increase if we did fifty thousand? Well, I know, but
On average, how many new teachers do you hire a year? Entry level?
Could be fifty.
Sure.
Could be fifty. Thirty five or forty.
Yes.
That won't be fifty.
If it was fifty, it would only be, only be an additional twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, right? We're only two hundred and fifty below the fifty thousand dollar mark. Is that right?
Would it be an assumption, though, that that's going to adjust the, that, that'll adjust the entire scale?
Yeah.
And so it, you won't just, but I mean, it's, it's
I, I still, I still
Fifty dollars, uh, but it will adjust the entire scale.
Skill.
Direction. It'll, I, I want to say that when we initially looked at that, it was somewhere in the ballpark. Right now, we're at a seven point one, seven percent increase. I want to say that was like seven point, do you remember, like five, six, some, somewhere in that ballpark, I thought is what it was. But we can certainly figure out what that percentage is, and if it's the will of the board. Yeah.
I think you have a good point to communicate something and say we're offering over fifty thousand. That's interesting.
Wasn't my point.
No, no, that's, uh, that's philosophically, that's, that's kind of a, something important we could say. Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that was the word I should have used. Yes, psychological.
Yeah, we got our seven point one, seven percent. They're very precise.
It's to put us in third place.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you based.
Buy more than one dollar, so.
Well, and I doubt whether this small increase would change that third place. I don't think.
And, and again, those are all only assumption that those other school divisions were, were offering the five percent, which we know at this point, some are, uh, but some are not.
Uh, just out of curiosity, so we're looking at a first year teacher here. Do we know enough about the other, uh, divisions, pay scales, know whether we would pretty much expect to be third place for most of the steps, you know, for higher steps? Or does it not change that much? You pretty much say, we think.
Uh, you mean, does it, are, are, would we stay third place for, say, step five, step ten, step fifteen?
Yeah, we have an idea.
That's hard to say.
Yeah, we'd have to crunch that. I'm not sure.
I mean, I don't care that much. I just wonder if you, okay.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that, um, Ms. Hoover and I heard when we were at the high school was that, um, and this isn't necessarily part of this budget, but looking more forward-thinking about our capital improvement plans, but that's, we'll just stay with this for now. But anyway. That we're not necessarily, that we're looking only four or five years ahead rather than five, ten or fifteen years ahead. We don't have to talk about that now, but if you'd write that down, we can talk more, but that was a common comment that we heard when we spoke with the high school teachers. We seem to only be looking at capital improvement at five years, and we should be looking at ten, fifteen or twenty.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at the revenue summary for the Governor's Proposed Budget. So what we, there aren't page numbers that I see, so. It's just right after the regional comparisons.
I see it. Yep.
Uh, so we proposed before, we were looking at about a three and a half million dollar increase over local spending, but now it's pushing five million.
Now with adjustments, it's, it's pushing, and, and again, these are all very fluid numbers. Right now, with, with the things that we've adjusted in, in the budget builder and the information that we've gotten from the, uh, Governor's Office. Yeah, it's four point nine now. If you look at the House of Delegates, it's even more at five point one. If you guys have time, please reach out to your legislator and, and suggest that they go, that we go along with the Senate.
Amen.
Budget, because, uh, then the locality is, we would only be asking for three point three in that example. And, and I, I, I think if history serves itself correct, we'll find ourselves somewhere in the middle of all that.
I think
No, I, I said, I, I, as you said, reach out. Yes, I have done that.
Good. Uh, before we moved on, was it, was it, uh, would you like us to start that starting salary? Is that, is that the desire of the board to start that starting salary at fifty thousand?
I'm in favor of it.
I'd like to look at what that was going to mean, because it's not just the first year teachers. I mean, I agree with you, that would only be twelve thousand dollars, but we have to look at
Even without that, we're already looking at the five million, when three and a half already sound like a lot, so.
You want to know what the cost of that adjustment would be?
Yes.
Okay. And at this point, really, I'm going to provide all of this information probably via email and hopefully solicit some feedback, because we're on a pretty tight timeline.
Yep.
Yeah.
So yeah, let's make sure all of us look at our emails in the next few days. I know we do.
But how, how would you envision that happening over email? I mean, do you just have to get individual input and somehow compile it? I mean, don't we have to meet again? I mean, I don't know how that would really work over email.
Let's see if we can avoid it. And I think that we can have this discussion via emails back and forth and having input. Let's
Can't call it a discussion.
Well, you know, we if it ends up we're having to have a meeting, oh, man. Well, let's take one step at a time. Let's look what happens when he'll send this out in an email. And if it does look like we've just got a whole lot of things that we need to discuss, then we'll have to call another meeting.
Okay.
As difficult as that would be, and it would be difficult.
So I, I do have other questions, but you, you have a flow that I don't want to interrupt if you're going through this.
No, sir, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, so just overall, if we take the five million dollar increase. That's basically, that's quick public math here. Yeah. That's, that'd be like a ten percent, am I right, increase? Oh, and that's not, it's even more than that.
So you're talking about the, uh, you're looking at the Governor's Proposed Budget in the four point nine million dollar increase from an, from a current budget of fifty six million?
Well, this local, you know, local will be up from twenty one point one.
I see. Yeah, much more than
To do a, get a percentage there.
So I never think that that's a good, a good metric, the percentage over the previous year, because it's, last year's was underfunded. So
Well, the Board of Supervisors
Starting from below, what?
The Board of Supervisors didn't think so, obviously, so. I guess that's what we got to pitch this to.
Well, they, regardless of what they think it was underfunded, they did not fully fund the school budget last year.
Define fully fund.
Fully funded, they did not
Everything they asked for.
They did not fully fund the budget that was proposed to them. They did not. They did not fully fund the school budget last year. So when we talk about the percentages.
I, I agree. I, I just think maybe that term is a bit misleading. It's like fully fund, like we're underfunding the schools, it just
It is, it is, it is underfunding the schools. It's a needs-based budget. And it concerns me that a member of this board would not believe, not.
Think it helps to be realistic to negotiate in good faith.
It is, it is, it is, it is real, it is realistic. That is the truth. The superintendent is required by law to put together a needs-based budget. It is the needs for our school. It is the needs to provide a public education to the citizens of this community and our students. And so when it's not fully funded, it is not fully funded and our needs are not being met. So while it may be a five or whatever percent increase over the previous year, it's, it is not an act, it's, it's a miscommunication of what our needs are, because we are already starting below where we should have been.
I'm agreeing with you, and I think the difference is, is that we, not the Board of Supervisors, determine what is being fully funded. And it's not the Board of Supervisors that determines that. We determine that. Now, in negotiation, I agree with you that there may be some give and take in this, but right now, I think this is, this is our decision to say, what is us being a fully funded, needs-based budget? And that's what we're doing. And I think maybe to try to figure out ahead of time what we need to negotiate, it's okay to have a lot of these figures so that we can not have to take another month to make a decision. We can come back with something, but at the same time to present something, this is what our budget is, that the board believes is fully funding the schools. I, I, I agree with you. But you're right in that there's, the Board of Supervisors doesn't think the way we do necessarily, because our responsibility is for the school. Anyway.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to point out that, that already with the budget we have, as we're talking about increasing more, though, is twenty, be a twenty four percent increase in local spending. I mean, that's not, that's significant, obviously.
So I'm, I want to make sure that I understand the will of the board here. So what we're saying is that we want Dr. Boyd and, um, his staff to come up with this one thing about starting salaries being slightly over fifty thousand, but look at that, what that looks like across the board. And we feel as though that's going to be a whole lot better communication as we try to get the teachers and recruit new teachers and so on. So is that the will that we want to do that? Or, um, should, because rather than saying we're going to communicate by email, if this is what we're saying, we may not need to communicate by email, except for them to give us the figure. And then basically we say yea or nay in an email.
We can't vote in an email.
I know, we can't vote. What I'm saying is, is that can we, well, I wish we could come up with some kind of figure now. I know that's too much work right now.
Let's just, let's just go, let's back up to everywhere before that portion of the conversation. Let's get the numbers, see what it looks like, and then go from there. When, so you said March ninth is when this is being presented?
March ninth.
So you wanted approval from us on the sixth before that, right? The Monday before, I'm assuming, under next meeting?
Yeah. So we will have another board meeting on the sixth.
Yeah.
Prior to the presentation. So we can cer-
So we could review
I can cer-, we can certainly provide that information well before that meeting, give you guys an opportunity to look at it individually, and then, uh, we can have a discussion and, and make a, a, a final board determination on the sixth. And, and I'll be ready to shift that presentation, whatever way we
The two big things would be the insurance, what we're talking about, what Mr. Rolls mentioned, and then the second would be the pay being starting salary of over fifty thousand for starting teachers and that ramifications of that across the board.
Thanks. Something else that's important to bring up, uh, that you already mentioned, uh, Mr. Bush, um, was the, uh, board training that we've already over budget on for this year. And to my knowledge, I think we've only done the kind of the minimum things we expect to do, which is go to the SBA conference and then get new members, new chair, we go to new chair training, we go to new member training. I'm not sure, do we really do much besides that? And we're already over budget? I mean, how, that means that budget seems slowly out of line with
I think that the only two items and what the paper that I've given you really are, the purchase services and the staff travel. The budgeted was forty six hundred and four thousand, and we're already at seven thousand, five hundred and sixty two hundred. So I think that's, the rest of it is kind of standard stuff, but those are the two things that
Well, the travels already is four thousand budgeted and re-
That's what I said.
I thought you said purchase.
Purchase services and the travel both, staff travel. Those are the two that we're over. You know, the salaries were not changing now. We've talked about it, but that's not changing at this point. The clerk salaries, FICA, and the rest of dues and general supplies, those are the two that we've used. And all I was doing was just making the board members aware that this is where we are, because I didn't know this. Um, and, uh, Ms. Bushrod pointed it out along with, uh, Dr. Boyd, and I was saying, oh, boy, I didn't realize that. So I was just making the rest of the board aware of that. Yet we're only talking about a few thousand dollars, but you still have a good point. And that, um, I don't think that we've necessarily done overage in our professional development. Um, and forty six hundred to me then is not enough.
Right. So I mean, I would request just to have this refactored, just knowing, maybe just come up with some guidelines or assumptions about training just to give to Dr. Boyd for that. I mean, we assume we're all going to go to the V SBA conference every year, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and just kind of looking historically, I mean, go way back, but you know, right now, four out of the five of us are in our first term. And when I was running, I met three people who had already served before, and two out of the three only did one term or less and then they were done. You know, and the second one, I think he only did two terms. So we don't really have you go to the V SBA conferences, you hear about board members who serve for twenty, thirty years. We don't do that in King George. Which means I think it's more turnover, it's going to be more training.
That we do not ever do that in King George. Let's, let's hope that we do not ever do that in King George.
Yeah, I suppose there's pros and cons, right? Because you could say less training is necessary once you've been at it for a while, but
Or more to keep you
Certainly more.
You continue, you continue
Yes.
Continuous learning to make sure you don't get stuck in old habits.
Especially needed when you have new members, we need to get them spun up so that, you know, get effective as fast as possible.
I just wonder in past years, for those that have been on the board, basically the two of you, has this been brought out before? Because I have a feeling that we must have overspent the last few years, not just this year.
Um.
Or do you know?
I don't. I don't know. I think this board this year, last year, may have attended more trainings than past boards.
I, I honestly
I don't know. It's hard to say.
I certainly can't go back in my memory one on one, but I don't over the years, I, board members typically went to, for example, the, the January, uh, the, the new member services, uh, the V SBA things, the uh, the, the meet and greet, the legislators, um, and then the east, the regional meetings, the eastern regional meetings coming up. We, we always have done those kind of things, but, uh, always have done those kind of things, but, uh, I don't know, I, I do not ever request travel reimbursement. That's just my donation to uh, the system. I, I don't know.
Yeah, me too.
Some people do want their travel reimbursed. I, um, I, I have a hard time seeing that the amount of training we're doing is a problem. I
Yeah, I agree.
I, I think we may need to look at that number and.
I don't think it was.
Anything we need to do more, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Gone overboard. It's just that this doesn't reflect the budget.
Yeah, and, and I would add, so in my, my time on the board, a chunk of my time on the board has been during COVID. And so like, there wasn't an annual convention one year. It was virtual. They, a lot of things were virtual, so, um, we likely did not go over because we weren't, we weren't traveling to things anyway.
Right.
So how about this for a suggestion for, to redo the budget for this area? We assume the VSPA conference every year. That everybody goes and that we, we would each have one additional training per year, just on average, because you get new member training or, you know.
I mean, I think we should consider, there should be, right? There, I mean, it depends on your philosophy on a board, right? Like, many boards do, do governance training on the regular to keep the boards, you know, to, to, to accommodate, you know, new board members, like new board dynamics, right? And that's gonna be an ongoing thing, right? Every two years, we're likely gonna have new board members. So, and I know, like, now we have a new superintendent, we were talking about doing governance training, so I mean, I don't, um, I guess I don't know historically, how, you know, how the numbers have played out, but I don't know that if we were going to like budget for things, I would say that we should budget for governance trainings, VSPA, a couple of trainings for board members, a couple, you know, whatever. I think there should be some.
I would think there would be things that we'd all do.
And certainly regional meeting, regional meetings are very, very important, because then you are talking to your other, uh, your other board members within your district and, I mean, within your, um, larger divisions. And really valuable information comes out of making those contacts. And, uh, for example, with the governor's schools, we're serving across those divisions, uh, with, uh, you know, I'm meeting with people from, uh, you know, Northumberland and Essex and, um, so I mean, I think it's really valuable to communicate, uh, outside of, of our county. Um, and I, I just don't think we're doing anything extra at this point.
I think we're all in agreement with this. Why don't we look at the?
Yeah, I mean, I can just finish my proposal here and see if we agree to give this to Dr. Boyd, just to come up with a number. So I was saying one additional training per year per member, but we wanna say two, is that what we're saying?
Sure.
All right, and we all go to the VSPA conference and we do a retreat every other year, probably every evening year, because that's when we would be getting new members, if we're getting them.
Or training or retreat.
Yeah, because this year, that's, it's four thousand dollars. That's not a small.
I, um, I think doing governance training at least once a year would be advisable.
Yeah, I'll see if it's, so four thousand dollars more per year.
Well.
You, you have a budget for?
Pardon?
Man, I'm just, I'm just asking for assumptions to come up.
What I was thinking is, why not look at, if we agree that this year is not necessarily an abnormal year, that we've pretty much done what we should have been doing, why don't we look at, have Ms. Bushrod, she would be the main one, say, okay, based on this, and if you, I don't think, I mean, I'm planning to go on only one more training, and that's with Dr. Boyd and I next week. After that, and then the board retreat, but those are about the only two. If we were to add those plus what we've already spent, let's look at that as a normal, we can change it, but that could be, uh, the new budget for this coming year. New basis, yes, however you wanna look at it. And.
I would have gone to another training in early March, but since we're out of money, I.
Well, and I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that. It's just like all of us, we don't necessarily claim travel or mileage and that. I think that's all good. And Dr. Boyd and I even talked about that, and I don't either, but we can't force other board members to feel that way. But I do think that if this is true, we feel this year is not abnormal. Um, I think that let's just look at what it would cost this year, and let's have a new basis, and let's go with next year. I mean, you're probably only talking about maybe ten thousand dollars more. I know that's a lot, but let's have Ms. Bushrod look at that, and then we'll have a new baseline for the next year. And then we'll reevaluate this every year.
You wanna, you wanna wait? But I mean, right now, we're trying for doing the budget, so.
Well, we can do this.
Project it.
I, I think that this could be, again, one of those things on the sixth, when we meet at the next board meeting, we'll have Miss, Miss Bushrod look at what we've already done and what's already in the plans, which would be the board retreat, and then also Dr. Boyd and I go into the superintendent's evaluation, which I think is important. Um, and let's look at what those totals would be, and we'll present that on the sixth, and that will be a new budget item for the school board training.
I, I can get that estimate. I can pull that estimate.
One other thing I, I would ask is, we get.
Let me finish. Does that sound acceptable?
Well, I wanna add one more thing to.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so for dues and membership, right now, I, I see you got twelve thousand in there, and I think that's a hundred percent VSPA?
Probably. I believe so, traditionally.
And where does the nine thousand for policy service fit in here?
Nine thousand for what?
We pay nine thousand a year to VSPA for policy service, and I'm wondering where that fits in. I don't see it. Except I'll see that purchase services, because that's less than nine thousand dollars. Or is that included in the twelve thousand? I thought it was separate.
I think it's included in twelve, isn't it?
Okay, well, I guess regardless, uh, there's another, other associations that offer services, and there's one particular, I'd be interested in, it's a per board member fee, two hundred dollars each.
For what?
I mean, for, for other, like, uh, school board representation and just.
You mean, but instead of policy services or instead of, like?
Membership just for board education and support.
Instead, but so in, in place of something or in addition?
In addition. So I don't know if we would all do that, but I assume maybe four, you know, so say an extra thousand dollars for dues to cover that.
And what, and what is it for?
Uh, it's a school board member alliance. It's, I solicited on the VDOE.
So you're not sure whether that's here or not here? That's what you're asking.
Well, this is, it's definitely not in here. This would be in addition, so that's a thousand dollars for the dues, is all I'm saying.
I would like to know more about what it is before we add it.
It's basically similar services to VSPA.
So now we want redundant services?
Yeah, I, I don't think monopolies are generally the best way to do things. I think having.
Who what?
Yeah, I, I don't think monopolies are generally the best way to do things, so having, what's a monopoly?
I mean, are you implying that VSPA is the monopoly?
Well, you don't wanna allow us to get advice elsewhere?
Hold on, I hear what you're saying. Why don't we find out if there's other membership dues that we've been paying and where that comes from, and if there's not, we can look at it and talk about it on the sixth, okay?
Yeah, this, okay, it's VSPA is what that is.
Yeah, okay, let's, we'll look at that, too. All right, let's go ahead. So we're gonna do that, and then this will also be part of the meeting on the sixth, and we can look at, because I think we all agree it needs to be increased. This forty six hundred and the four thousand is definitely not enough compared to what we've used so far this year. All right, um, Dr. Boyd, anything else or other comments from board members?
Nothing additional from me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so let me review the things we're gonna do. Number one is, we're gonna look at the possible changes in the insurance, and we're gonna get an email about that, to look at that and prepare for the sixth. The second thing is this fifty thousand and how, what that would mean across the board and how much that would be an increase. And then the third thing is this board training, where we'll work with Ms. Bushrod to find out what this is gonna be, and that'll be a new baseline for next year, and we'll that'll come up before the next board meeting on the sixth.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else? That's our next board meeting on March. Right, that's a regular meeting, but we're gonna, so we don't have to meet another time before then. I think we can cover all this on the sixth.
So I'll provide all of this information ahead of time as soon as we pull it together. Make sure you guys have an opportunity to take a look at it, and then on the sixth, I'll wait for direction from you on how to adjust the presentation prior to that Thursday presenting to the board supervisors.
And also, if you can, if you'll have more information, we, you probably will, about how many of those work sessions they're gonna have, because I would like to attend if I'm here.
Okay.
But, um, and for all of us that can attend some of those work sessions for the board of supervisors, I think it'd be really valuable.
You mentioned the ninth as the first one.
Yes, I, I do know the ninth is the first one. There's been a request that the school division, I believe the sheriff's department, and I, I wanna say emergency services, I think were, were, uh, the three departments that were requested to be first uh, in the budget presentation process, and, uh.
There'll be concessions that we won't be invited to as well, but they might invite us back multiple times.
They're open meetings.
Uh, we, my understanding is, is that we will be invited one time to, to make a presentation. They're certainly open in public meetings. We can go to all of them. Um, I don't know that there will be any, again, I can't speak for the board of supervisors, any requests for a follow-up presentation or anything of that nature. I'm not familiar with that, anything like that in the past.
And the last comment I'd like to make, and I know we've talked about this several times, is as many times that we can have communications with the board of supervisors and the teachers and administrators and getting more and more input as we look at this total picture of the budget, I think the more informed it will be, um, an ongoing discussion, and I appreciate very much, Dr. Boyd, is, um, your meeting with board supervisor individually, and I know that several of us, I'm planning some dinners, and I need to talk to both of you guys about it. And, um, also, um, as much as we can in communication, especially even socially. I know we can't do that as a whole board, or at least that's difficult, to say the least. But, um, you know, meeting with them, having coffee with them, whatever, so that we can build this communication. So when we do come up with having to talk about tough things, we've got a relationship with them. So just encouragement to do that even more. All right, any other last comments before we adjourn? All right, do I have a motion to, um, adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? We are now adjourned.